Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember Clayton.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Please stand for a silent prayer, a moment of reflection. We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner: The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster and Star Ledger on January 3, 2023, and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. At this time, we're on to special event applications.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The first application is from the Chamber of Commerce for their annual downtown tree lighting, December 2. Next is the city's annual trunk or treat event. As a sidebar, we need cars for that event, so right now we only have seven. We need a lot more.
Total, we only have seven.
Yeah, signed up, so please, any cars would be appreciated. Next is the meal kit giveaway on October 28. Free haircuts for the homeless on October 22 in Springwood Park. And the Jersey Shore Rescue Mission, their annual coke giveaway on November 18. Are there any questions?
So, Leisha, can you tell us who's sponsoring the meal kit giveaway?
That's the city, Department of Community Development.
Great, and what about the free haircuts?
Yeah, that's the police department in conjunction with our social service department as well as the county.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
And you'll notify the schools for the meal kit, Leisha, right?
Yes, we will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're now on to matters from City Council. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Nothing for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Chapman.
So just to follow up on Leisha's comment, the city is collecting candy donations for trick or treat. Also, if anybody has a vehicle they'd like to participate, we park them out here in City Hall parking lot and fill up the trunks with candy, and the children of our community get to walk through and be given candy for trick or treat. So I hope some of you will participate.
Thank you. Councilmember Clayton.
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Nothing.
Mayor Moore.
Nothing, thank you.
Excuse me, I do have something.
Go ahead.
Forgive me. On the 17th, which is a Tuesday, from 12 to 2 here, the senior tax-free workshop will be offered. So there is a number on our website, also in the newsletter that you received. You do need to call and make an appointment. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Matters from the city manager.
I have nothing, Lisa.
Thank you. Matters from the city attorney.
Nothing at this time, Lisa.
Thank you. We're now on to public participation. My motion to open the meeting to the public.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public participation portion is now open. Any member of the public who wishes to speak, please use the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and there will be a three-minute time limit for each speaker. Again, your name and address.
The mic fell back there.
You have to go back there.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nancy Phillips, and I'm actually a resident of Neptune, United Asbury Park. But I've been following Asbury Park for years. Mr. Mayor, I've left several messages with you. I've been trying to meet with you for weeks and weeks and weeks, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to talk to you, Mayor, about all the crimes, all the killings, all the shootings that's going on in Asbury Park, right underneath those brand-new cameras that's installed all over Asbury Park, but yet not one crime is being solved, Mr. Mayor. You got all these cameras up and down Asbury Park, but not one crime is being solved, Mayor. I wanted to talk to you, Mayor, about the Housing Authority and how they robbed the community for $2.3 million, Mr. Mayor. Are you aware of that? Are you aware that the Asbury Park Housing Authority just purchased seven personal cars? Are you aware of that? Are you aware that the Asbury Park High School cannot pass its basic skills? Are you aware of that? No, you sit in your office and you are oblivious. You are oblivious to the fact that downstairs, the police department just got sued for $1.2 million for racism. Are you aware of that? Are you aware that four more police officers filed complaints about racism downstairs? Do you ever leave your office, or do you just sit there? You don't return calls. Rumor has it that you're a drunk, and you don't care about the town. If it's not about those $1 million condos, you don't care. How the flying heck do you have to pay for parking a meter just to talk to you? Are you that important? No, you're not. And on that note, Mayor, I'm leaving because I refuse to believe that you're that oblivious. Either you're just stupid, or you don't care about the town. The town is constantly being robbed. That's why the state of New Jersey don't want to give y'all money because every time they do, you rob the community. What are y'all doing with the money? Lock these people up! $2.3 million, somebody should be in prison right now, but no, they clocking and they got a job tomorrow. But do you care? No. As long as it's not about the million-dollar condos, you could care less. Have a good day, Mr. Mayor.
Next.
Thank you, and I have to reply. And number one, I do not have an office. Number two, I have business cards with my home phone number on it.
I need one.
My city phone, I'll give you one, no problem. I did get a message, I'm gonna say, three weeks ago from you, one message saying that you wanted to talk about crime going on, and I said, I think that's better conversation for you to have with either the city manager or the police chief. I know the police reached out and talked to you.
I expected, I wanted to speak to you first.
Okay, your time is up, ma'am.
This is your town, not the police.
Your time is up, ma'am.
Oh, okay.
In our form of government, I cannot answer for the police. I cannot even ask the police questions, so that's why I suggested.
This is your town. You run this town.
If you're gonna keep on interrupting, I'm gonna ask the police officer to take you outside, just because I'm trying to answer your questions, but ma'am, you spoke, you said you were done. You hit me with some stupid comments of my opinion.
Stupid? They robbed you $2.3 million, stupid?
Okay, you have to leave.
Okay. You heard what he said, America, because I am online and have 12,000 followers. Everything he said I was stupid. I told you, America, don't care. I told y'all, you heard it with your own ears.
Do you want my business card so you can call me?
Sure. I mean, I got it before from the fire department when they was complaining that, you know, outsiders was bullying the fire department, not the people in town. I just lost it. Thanks again.
Thank you, and everybody in this room will tell you I returned phone calls.
Do they call? It's like they didn't call. They just called out, "America, you didn't even learn my code yet." See how we lock? You get to see the lights, man. Like, Mr. Mayor, y'all heard what that shit is. Y'all heard what that shit is.
Rita, go ahead.
I should beep you out. Well, I have a complaint too, as usual. I've heard they had a shade tree commission meeting. Well, that's wonderful, and they talked about the bushes that we were always talking about. But how come I didn't know about it, and neither did the neighbor next door? Because we're involved with it. But how do you have a meeting and talk about it and not have the people that are complaining and the ones that have it at that meeting? That wasn't fair. I don't know what's going on here. All it takes is a phone call to say they have a meeting. We don't look, I don't look on the web. I'm sorry. There's too many pages to look at. But I would've came to that meeting because it involves me, and I think that at least we should've got a courtesy call. I don't know about Reggie. I don't even think she knows about it. But how do you do things like that? And then I reread the shade tree thing again, once more. I know it by heart now. And on every single rule, it says, "by consent of council." You have to give your consent to the commission. So why, what are we talking about? We're talking about the commission has all the authority to come in and tell a private taxpayer that their hedges are on public property. Boy, you were fast taking down all the signs on public property. That happened immediately. So why can't, this is five years. We're talking about 2018. It's five years since we started this conversation. It's not fair that we don't know about. And then she says the same thing. She said, the planner said, and she should be at a meeting too, she said they've cut down to 30 inches. Well, what is she talking about? She talked like that a year ago, and here it is another year, and I'm getting too old. I want to see it done. I mean, I don't understand what, why, how you have a meeting and the people involved aren't even there. That's not fair. I don't want to blame one person for this, but that planner, I wish you'd have her here some night so I could talk to her. I'd love to talk to her, but you can't get her on the phone. And the zoning officer, I don't know too much about her, but she can't see everything from her office. She has to get out on the street, and I heard she was on our street recently. I don't know what she was doing, but she was there. There's lots of things that are wrong. There's all these people are on public property, and it's not right. And I'm lucky we never had an accident going out of our driveway.
Rita, your time's up, and Donna or Amy, because I'm on the shade tree commission.
So what do you think about that?
I can start. I can start. Maybe Fred can clean up anything I say that's wrong. So, Rita, we had a shade tree meeting. I'm assuming they advertised it. I don't know that anyone got a courtesy call. I'll, you know, apologize for that. I'll take, I'll apologize for that. I'm sure Reggie didn't get one either. We had members of the public there. Werner was there. I mean, we had several members of the public at that meeting. It was about 90 minutes. We also had Fred advising the shade tree on what our legal responsibility is. We had Michelle giving her opinion and interpretation of the ordinance. I just want to be really clear. The shade tree likes to plant gardens and put up some trees. We are not generally, normally tasked with, you know, enforcement or, you know, making a policy determination on right-of-way. Having said that, we took nine minutes, we read the three different ordinances, the state, the local, and we had a vote on the shrubs that you're talking about, that they would be reduced in size to what our engineer and transportation planner thought was safe. That was the end result of the shade tree meeting. I will, I will take responsibility as a member of the shade tree. In retrospect, yes, we probably should have personally called you and Reggie. I don't think we called anyone. We just did a public notice and had the meeting. Did I say anything wrong, Fred?
No, you are 100% accurate.
No, but that wasn't a regular meeting. I mean, we know when council meetings are. We know when the.
Okay, Rita, Rita, because of the time limit.
Okay.
You raised a concern. You can call tomorrow and talk to the city manager, the planner, the zoner. As far as asking an employee to come here directly with you, I think maybe a meeting can be set up during work hours with you and the people involved.
I'm gonna say one last thing, Rita. There is gonna be a report by the engineer memorializing their decision based on what the shade tree requested. Is that a correct statement? Well, I mean, we obviously know your position and Reggie's position. It was laid out in the adversarial nature of the complaint.
But wait a minute.
Okay, so why don't.
By the law, that's not the law. The law says that you have public property, and nobody should be on it. That's the law. No. Maybe not in Asbury, but every place else.
The law leaves the determination as to shade trees and other shrubbery that are within the right-of-way to be subject to the discretion of the Shade Tree Commission. The Shade Tree Commission is vested with the exclusive authority to allow planting, require trimming, and they basically have control over ornamental shade trees and other shrubbery that's within the right-of-way. And this particular hedge is within the right-of-way. The Shade Tree Commission at that meeting considered the hedge, and a determination, as the deputy mayor indicated, was made by the Shade Tree Commission to require the next-door neighbors to trim the hedge to a height that is to be determined in furtherance of public safety by the engineer and the transportation manager and the planner, committee of the three of them, to ensure public safety.
And who's gonna tell them? You?
Well, no, it's based upon their expertise and ensuring basically turning radius, site, and whatnot with coming into and out of the driveway, and the trimming is to be in accordance with public safety, so.
Next.
Hello, I've never done this before, so bear with me. My name is Jill Acapinti, and I live at 300 Emory Street, the Steinbeck Building, a SACMAN property. Can my neighbors who are here just make yourselves known? Thank you. We're here to, we understand the rent levelling ordinance was being presented, and we'd like to speak on that a bit. We understand the complexities and the legality of the fact that the Steinbeck Building SACMAN has applied for and was granted an exemption. However, is there no cap? I don't know if anyone's willing to just sort of yell out what percentage your rents were raised this year.
23%, 25%.
27%.
23%.
17%.
Okay, one at a time, please, okay?
32%, I heard, 23%, 20. This is, is there no cap? Can the city get involved in any way? Just because they legally can, is that, that they can run rampant over our, people can't do, we can't live like this. I've lived in that building for 14 years. For the first 12 years of my time there, my rent was raised $50 a month, a month per year. So I had every expectation based on just past precedent that that would be the case. I didn't even open the email last year that gave me my new lease renewal until it was like almost time to sign because it was, I expected it to be status quo. And, okay, last year I thought, right, we've come off the pandemic. They didn't charge for one year. They loved touting that. No one did. So if they're making up for some of that, we're getting, I was still under market value. I recognize all of this. But now, at what point does this stop? Can the council get involved in any way to cap this? I guess that's really my question. The conditions of the building and all of that are, you know, a whole other issue, but my concern is the lack of any oversight into the rent levelling for SACMAN at some of their buildings. And I fear that I'm gonna be public enemy number one now because I kind of helped get this together, so now I worry. If there's no cap this year, what will they do for me next year? Because my name has been attached to this. So, do you have any feedback, any thoughts, any, any direction we can go? Robert?
Yes, Mr. Goodman, who, obviously you know him, call him Robert.
Well, no, I don't.
No, no, I mean, Robert, and I know your voice is weak, so you're gonna have to use the microphone and answer that question. I'm sure there's gonna be other ones. And we asked Mr. Goodman to be here tonight expecting to get these questions, and so he's the person in charge. So instead of me saying, I think it's this, I think it's that, we're gonna get it right.
Good evening, Mrs. Acapinti or?
Acapinti.
Acapinti. We've met once.
Yes, you're not Robert, you're Mr. Goodman.
You're very kind. Thank you. So it is a very complicated issue. The reason the exemption was granted is that the state passed legislation back in the early, actually originated in the late 1980s, but was finally enacted in 1992, I believe, and then revised yet again to run almost in perpetuity the policy that if a developer comes in and creates net new housing, in other words, more housing than had previously existed, they are eligible for an exemption from rent control. And this was to encourage development of new housing, specifically with the idea of affordable housing in urban centers which had rent control. There was a provision in there that said that if rent control ordinances were enacted in a community where a developer had previously given a, you know, had built net new housing, that they could, within 30 days of enactment of that ordinance, they could ask for a claim of exemption. The SACMAN organization requested this for a total of six buildings. Two were denied, four were granted. Two were denied simply because they, all they did is just renovate the existing space with no new net housing dwelling units. There is very little that can be done. I think when, at the time you and I had last spoken, I reported the news that NORC had put a clause in their ordinance regarding rent leveling that would have created an unconscionable rent increase of anything greater than 5%. You know, would be a violation. So if you log, if you saw how pitifully short and undefined this was, it was going to invite litigation. No one has, at this point, successfully ever been able to do something that would try to supersede state law regarding this exemption. As it stands today, there's, there's nothing that the city can do to come up with a remedy. The only option, as we had discussed, was to actually go through landlord-tenant court. And we know this is expensive, if, even if you're a low-to-moderate income tenant, even getting, applying for legal aid or from other nonprofits that may be able to represent your interest is very challenging. It's time-consuming. It's emotionally draining for most people. So whether it's fair or not, it's clear that it's, it's hard to work through, but under the current circumstances, the SACMAN organization does have the right to increase their rents without the, you know, the governance of the local ordinance regarding rent leveling.
But Robert, is fair, the city itself can do nothing? Is, there's nothing legally or morally at this point that they?
I think legally, there is nothing. We can't prevent them from doing it. I think, you know, and this would be if Robert feels comfortable reaching out and maybe talking to them and seeing if we can get anywhere there. But from a legal point of view, well, the only reason I say that is you don't want to totally, like, alienate the council if you're a developer in town. So, so the idea would, you know, maybe Robert could spend some time thinking through a way to reach out to SACMAN and express what was expressed tonight, but from a legal point of view. And Jill, just so you know, we spent our 90 minutes in executive session with a rent control attorney, trying to figure out how we capture not only Steinback, but all of the one-bedrooms, single-family houses, two-bedrooms, all of these other units where very similar circumstances are happening. Our rent control captures three units or more, and so the discussion from the rent control attorney took us through, do we have options in capturing some of these other units? Although that also wouldn't apply to you because the state says the Steinback Building is closed, is not, will not be covered under our rent control ordinance until another, you said 10 years, Robert, right?
That's correct.
But this could be considered an unconscionable raise?
Yes?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
And that, that's.
One at a time, or else we're never gonna get done. So if everybody wants to add, talk, just get up and get in line.
Ms. Chapman, to your point, that's, I think, what most people's concern is, and, you know, do we ban together and do a landlord-tenant court situation? I don't know, but I'm hearing 32%.
That's, that's crazy. And a judge will recognize a raise that high as an unconscionable?
I don't know, and I hope they would. I don't know if we should be making that comment. I don't know if Robert can make that comment.
I made it.
I know, I mean, I wish a judge would make it. 32% is unconscionable.
It is.
I mean, there's no question about it, but again, like Robert said, to get to a court and everything, I don't know what the process is. Is the city thing is totally wrong? Absolutely. Can we do anything legally? No. Can we support you other ways? Yes, by having Robert or anybody reach out to him. If the city attorney has any ideas, what you as a group or singly can do, I mean, I think all five of us are very supportive of the dilemma you're caught in and want to support it, but legally, like, the city can't sue him and stop him. Because as Amy said, it's the state that has.
Granted the exemption.
Right, not the city has granted the exemption.
For 30-year period.
The state has.
Right, that's where, that's where my 10 years was coming from. The state granted the exemption for 30.
So the specifics around that is that anybody who receives this claimed exemption, it is 30 years from the time that they receive their technical certificate of occupancy. In the case of the SACMAN buildings, and it's in this series, but they're grouped together, they only have about eight to, I believe, 10 years left. I can get down the specifics on each building.
10 years at 32% is a lot of money.
It's a lot.
If there's no raise in hands, let's get in line and get the microphone. Yep, and so.
I can make myself available if there are further questions.
It looks like there's gonna be many, so sit where you're at.
Are you willing to speak on behalf and let SAC, Mr. Goodman, from your position, and sort of let them know how many people showed up? This isn't, I was expecting maybe like two or three neighbors. This is, made this my heart sore with just the fact that we're all in this together. It's from your position, is that something you would do? And I know it'll probably get nowhere and fall on deaf ears, but can we say that you'll make that connection?
In answer to your question, the only tools I have are professional collegiality with the staff at SACMAN's organization, moral suasion, and hopefully your prayers and support in that something can happen. I, like you said, I'm not sure this would be effective. I understand the reasons as to why they're raising their rents, personal opinion only. I think the rate at which they're doing it is drastic. It may be indicative of something else, but that's pure speculation, personal speculation on my part. Nonetheless, I am willing to reach out to the SACMAN organization, and I may be asking additional information from you and your fellow residents to help build that discussion into something meaningful.
Yeah, and Jill, I'll also call Mr. SACMAN myself, and I'll also express to him the. I should've said you, Donna. That's okay. No, no, we're all in this together. It doesn't matter. Yeah, and again, I don't know that myself or Robert are gonna make any headway, as you're aware, but I think if we have the open lines of communication, there's people on his staff that do the appraisals that we both know intimately, that we can speak to, and perhaps, you know, I don't know what your leases are and whatnot, but perhaps there's something he can do moving forward that can alleviate.
Are you willing to negotiate?
Yeah.
10%, that's what we're.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll express that to him.
Okay.
Do the best that we can. Keep in contact with Robert. He is our resident expert. Yeah, I mean, what, what I can tell you is we're gonna talk. If I have some great news, we'll certainly reach out to you, but I don't, you know.
I know.
You never know, though.
I know.
You have to ask.
That's why we're here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And Donna, when you, Donna first, then Robert, Mr. Goodman, when you have the discussion with SACMAN and SACMAN Enterprises, I think it'd be very strong that, you know, the entire council, all five of us.
Sure, absolutely.
Are completely in agreement that this is nonsense, that should be relooked at, and we appreciate it. We know we can't force them to, but it is a moral issue, and so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Aubrey Hunt. I'm also a SACMAN resident. My husband and I have been there 13 years. In that time, you know, most of, there's been a lot of damage and leaks. And we always were big supporters, you know. I'm a member of the Chamber of Commerce. I have a bit, local business. I, my main source of referrals is from first responders at the state level and the local level, and I'm a trauma therapist, and I've literally had to cut back on my hours because of these mysterious illnesses that I've been having. I had full blood work done, and it showed that there was an excessive amount of mold in my system, and some of these moles are neurotoxic. And so I've had a lot of trouble because it causes Parkinsonian-like symptoms, and the treatments are very expensive. And I just want to say that this has created so much disruption. You know, it's really hard to swallow the fact that your home might be making you ill. But we love this place, and we don't want to leave, but we just feel like there's constant leaks. You know, they didn't come to fix a toilet, and it flooded two floors when they said that they were, because they were too busy trying to get a CO upstairs. I have it all written in formal emails. They admitted to me today that they found more mold in another area of the. They admitted to me today that they found more mold in another area of the apartment that, which was links to my home office. So needless to say, I feel very sad that, like, I don't want to leave. I never wanted to cause a problem. We tried to have them remediate it and it's been falling on deaf ears. So I don't know if there's an environmental aspect that can be approached here because it's environmentally unsound. Where there's leaks, there's water. And, you know, we've had a remediation three times and it's still there. I understand it's an, you know, a historical landmark. I've lived in this area my entire life. But it just seems that they're not keeping the building up to livable standards. There is, as we speak, ceiling all over outside of my, our apartment, just sitting there from last week. Never, no attempt to clean it up or anything. It's, it's, it's sad. And like I said, I would never, ever want to push any buttons, but having your rent raised eight hundred dollars a month in two years is insane. And because I haven't been able to work, I've, I feel like I'm letting my patience down and I feel like I'm letting, I can't gross the income anymore. And it's been a struggle. So, you know, that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, please.
I'm not gonna take three minutes. I just have a question, I promise.
Do you guys need to pick up a moment?
Hi, I'm Cheryl Fay. I live at Steinbach. I really appreciate you guys taking the time to listen to us and our concerns because, like everyone said, they have fallen on deaf ears. And I appreciate you both offering to reach out to SACMAN. But I think we all know that SACMAN is a powerhouse. And my, myself, I'm a social worker and I advocate for my clients all the time. And this time, I'm gonna go above and beyond to advocate for myself. So with that saying that the council supports us, if this were to gain media exposure, would the council support us?
Yeah.
Yeah. We're on AV TV now. It's being taped, so anybody in Monmouth County, you can watch this. It's on TV several times a week. And so we all went on record that we support you. So, absolutely. I mean, you got mine, I can't speak for all five, but you have my support a hundred percent.
Because I think we may have to take it to another level at some point if nothing can be resolved. Because it's just, it's immoral at this point. And probably on two occasions just in the past year, the building has almost blown up from natural gas leaking, which was pretty traumatizing in and of itself.
Yeah. So I'm gonna interject. I mean, if, you know, we've heard things, but if this is the serious, you know, our, the local health department is our county health department. And I would highly recommend that you reach out to them. I will also reach out to the health officer tomorrow and advise him of the concerns that we're having at your building. But don't ever hesitate. Like, if you have something like a, like, call the nine-one-one, call the health office. You know, our code department enforces code violations. They're not handling these like immediate life safety issues. So don't put yourselves in a situation where life safety is, is critical.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name's Justine Weiner. I also live in the Steinbach building. It's kind of perfect that you brought up the health department because, Mr. Goodman, when I heard your name, it's, I left you a message. Matthew from the health department gave me your number to call directly. I live on the fourth floor where all my neighbors have mold. There's black mold and I've been dealing with health issues for a year. I've been going to all these specialists and no one can tell me what's wrong with me. So when I heard that there's black mold and I saw multiple units on my floor with black mold growing and that SACMAN is aware of, and they told them, oh, it's New Jersey. They came to my apartment finally, because I just stormed over there and demanded that they come to my apartment immediately to look at the leak in my ceiling. I called the health department on the phone to have them to make sure they did everything right, because they just had painters that had no idea, but they were coming over trying to open my ceiling. And I had to tell the health department, my windows don't open when they asked me, do you have proper ventilation? He gave me your direct line and I called you and I left you a message and I explained that there's possibly black mold and there's no ventilation, there's no way to open my window. You didn't call me back. I just-
So you haven't heard back from the health department?
I, no. I, the health department gave me Mr. Goodman's direct line and-
Who's direct line? I'm sorry.
Mr. Goodman's.
So Mr. Goodman doesn't enforce black mold? That's the health department.
But you do code, code enforcement.
Yes. What's your name again?
Justine Weiner.
Forgive me, I, I don't believe I've received any message. And I can check our phone logs.
All right. It was Friday before Labor Day, but what did the two buildings that you failed, what improvements did you, what, that they make in our building that they didn't make in the two improvements? And the two buildings that you failed them to be able to raise the rent in? Because you said they didn't raise, like, right? You said there was five buildings that they applied for, correct?
Six overall.
Yeah. And it's the state that granted them the exemptions, not the city.
So the state said the other two did not qualify for-
The exemption.
To be out of rent.
Because of the improvements that they made.
Because of the timeframe.
Oh.
And the improvements.
And the improvements. And the timeframe and improvements.
And the improvements. Housing units. Well, that's it. Just, that's all I wanted to say. Our windows don't open. We have black mold. Thanks.
All right. We'll, we'll follow up with the health department.
I understand, my name is Michael Green. I've been here for fifty years on, I understand that SACMAN is a business and I believe in a laser business. But when it becomes a totalitarian real estate trust, does it not some way come into some view of being like a Sherman antitrust, where they have all the stores and they've taken all this property and they've, by control of, if you want to be here, I'm wearing the building. And I know that I used to get two-year leases. And I don't want to fight, I think anything can be settled. I don't, I have a business, I don't sue anybody. I've always found that the only people that make law, make money in suits are lawyers. But isn't there some way, or is there some law that does not allow for real estate trusts to, in a totalitarian way, not saying by using fiscal force, but to force their use of law because they're funded? Are they allowed to buy the property and buy the property and then take that property and say, well, we have it if you want to be here, that's it? That's all I have to say. I, I, I've gone from, I think I went from twenty-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars with my parking, it was maybe twenty-four-hundred dollars. Now I'm at twenty-seven-fifty. And I'm an older person. I'm probably the oldest person in the building. And, and, and I'd like to stay here. I've been here for years, but that, I'm not doing that, isn't, is, does there any way this comes under the law of being a real estate monopoly? That's all I have to say. And can you help us look to see if there's any? I don't know what to do and I don't want to talk, just to talk, just, I'm just throwing something out there. I don't know if it means anything, it probably doesn't. But I know that I'm, I'm, I'm getting stressed now by what my apartment is.
Thank you.
Hi. Longtime listener, first time caller. Hi. I don't feel comfortable divulging my full, I guess, name information. You can call me Jay, just for fear of retaliation, et cetera. I just want to speak on, obviously, the moral maybe implications of the SACMAN situation from a tenant. Thank you guys for clearing up some of the legal, you know, reasoning why. It's very confusing getting a Asbury Park newsletter that says three-point-five percent is the rent cap, just to see that our neighbors got at least somewhere between fifteen and twenty percent. Their rent went up, went up about three hundred dollars. Means ours is gonna be next. Our building's definitely nothing special from the SACMAN side. Just want to say, obviously, the community that's here, a lot of us are here on short notice. This is not a very well-promoted meeting, I don't believe, outside of, out of circles. The crowd can and should be a lot bigger for this. I just really want to speak on the fact that the city here, obviously, everyone here, that's a transplant. For all of us, we want to be here. This is a phenomenal gem of a city, maybe the most special place in New Jersey. I'm sure all of us feel that way, of all age groups, of all walks of life. If you guys look around, even behind you, if you look anywhere on the streets here, obviously, Asbury's known for its arts, its culture, its music. The people that are responsible for making the art, the culture, and the music are not in the income bracket that is gonna be affordable in only a couple of years. Ten years is much too long. So you're gonna lose the art, the music, the culture in favor of, I'm not quite sure what, what you guys need or what, not you need, but what, what the goal is here to have the town populated by. I don't mean to generalize, but a huge chunk of what makes this place special, the draw of it, you can't promote the stone pony, you cannot promote the imagery that the town, you know, draws in for its tourism. Just to say, none of you are actually welcome here to be making it. And I understand that Asbury went through a huge revitalization. This is what comes with it, gentrification. And I'm privileged to be a transplant myself, to be living here. This isn't even to speak on the difficulties of the original native, you know, residents here that have absolutely been priced out much longer, I'm sure, than, than us. So, you know, obviously, I'm not here to talk about, can we get more legal action, et cetera? I just need to know that, you know, the very moral fabric of what this town represents to a lot of people, I think to everybody in this room, I think to you guys on the council, I think that this is a special place, we all know it. That speciality's just gonna be leaving at every single increase possible. And that three-point-five percent rent, you know, thing that I read about, it's just, it just feels like, it just feels like jokes. It feels like, you know, absolute, you know, just, just clown stuff. So I don't want to go on too long, but the, the, the city, I think, depends on the people that are being the most affected by this ridiculous, like, rent increase with absolute impunity. And I know you guys want to save Asbury Park, want to save the music, we want to have those conversations, we want to promote this place. It's what it is. We're gonna need this income bracket of human beings to try to live here and be comfortable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Tracy, hold up one second. You did fantastic and you, you, you hit, you hit it on the head. I mean, you're right. We all up here want diversity also. We're tired of not just the gentrification on the southwest side or other with people of color, but the gentrification of like the bartenders, the waitresses, the everything. And again, in this situation, the decision was made by the state as far as like what can charge and with the people selling their houses at ridiculous prices is driving local people out because people are just coming in, buying them, gotten them, and put another four-hundred thousand dollars into it. And the fabric in Asbury Park and what made Asbury Park so special to all of us, you're, you're absolutely right. It's, and it can't wait another ten years. So we will do our best. There's nothing we can do legally, but we can somehow put, try to get more pressure other ways. But thank you for, you're absolutely right. Thank you.
Yeah. And just so you know, there are other projects that are coming before us that bring some more affordable housing and artist workspace into the community. As someone who used to manage the stone pony and fought to stave the stone pony in the redevelopment area, I completely get what you're saying and absolutely agree.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Tracy.
Tracy Rogers, six-ten Silk Avenue. First, my group, Asbury Park Affordable Housing Coalition, is the group that actually puts for the rent control. There are issues, we know, and I'm trying to fight on state level to, to get that exemption from these buildings that have a thirty-year exemption. And there is talk in the state, but it's also monumental. But I can understand where you're going. We've pushed for a lot of things and that's why I came here tonight. We have to, I have to congratulate the city on a, on a suit that we filed because of the mismanagement of RCA. Right now, the city has worked with the housing authority and right now, Lincoln Village, a, a, a housing project that would have been demolished, will not be just demolished. We will rebuild before those people and they're moving to another place. And the city has also approved sixty-nine new affordable units that are gonna be on that site for Lincoln Village. So I wanted to come in and thank the council for this, for this monumental, because I just actually talked to Rutgers. We're one of the first cities not to get rid of a low-income housing project and actually effectively save it through the work of combining with the housing authority in the city to make sure we, we're getting something done. So right now, I'm, I'm, every, every other day, I'm on calls with the state, looking at different options. But we, if we band together, we can get leg-
How can we get involved in your organization?
You can go on tour. We have a Facebook page, that's where Park Affordable Housing Coalition. And you can sign up, send me your numbers. And I, you know, I try to check it as much as I possible. But we continue to, have to continue to keep this, this active. And I think with the inclusion of rezonies that the council, that we, we helped the council or of course, I think we're almost up to some projects that we're gonna be looking at at least a hundred, two-hundred units that are, when they're built. Am I right, Fred? Projects that are gonna be coming on board with some affordable units coming on. So, you know, it's, it's a struggle. It's, the game's not over, but we have to continue. The only, last things I want to talk about, I didn't know, certain things were on the leveling board. I do want to push that the city actually looks at covering single units and two-family units. I think that's a preference that they, but also, and I was at the court hearing, because I'm a interested party, local preference for these units, I think if this council would look to adding local preference, so people from Asbury Park with the first opportunities for these, for these apartments coming up would be a him. Jersey City and NORC have that ordinance. I believe we should be joining in to create local, local preference for these affordable units that are coming on. So thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. And I know at times, we did always agree in the past couple of years on this issue. It's, we're finally at, close to the finish line. And you've been a help. And just one thing I want to throw out there, when Tracy said because of the mismanagement by the city, that was decades ago. It wasn't us. I mean, so I don't want anybody new here thinking, oh, these knuckleheads like screwed this up? No, we didn't. Okay. Thank you.
Sylvia, Sylvia, Director for the Asbury Park Chamber of Commerce. First, Jay, I completely agree with what you said about Asbury Park maybe being the most special place in New Jersey. And also, John, to your point, I worked on Cookman in the eighties and it's a completely different atmosphere now. And people, they come here, they stay here, they love it here. Rita, I found out the other day, had her own business here in nineteen-sixty-nine, opened up a business here. I, I, the atmosphere that we have here, I think, is due in large part to you guys and how receptive and how interactive you are with the community and trying to make sure that things move productively in a, in a, in a, in a manner that, that helps support everybody, which, none of this is what I came here to talk about, by the way. I just wanted to put my two cents in there. I wanted to talk about a couple of things, mostly they're weather-related, which is not your fault, so I don't have to complain on weather. One is, the week after my festival, that, I'll get back to that in a minute, there was the, that might have been the most flooding I've seen here in I don't know how long. And I really have to commend Julianne Murray. She coordinated with FEMA to see if there's any way that our businesses can qualify for some support. And I'm guessing also residential, but my purview is in the, in the business arena. And, you know, we tried to help promote that as well. And I think that might have been my most opened email blast in, since COVID started. I mean, she really did a magnificent job. And again, I, I know I've said this before, she's an excellent find, so thank you for that. I did reach out to a friend at the NJEDA to see if there's anything they can do there as well. And I'll get back to you if I find anything from them. Prior to that, the week before, was my disaster of a festival. I want to thank you guys all for reaching out about it. You know, we, Asbury Fest is our biggest event of the year and it's how we support all of the nonprofits and the business community and how we do the things that we do. And I think it occurred to me this year, maybe we should stop doing it in hurricane season? So I, I'm gonna put in, I'm gonna pull out my application for next year, Leisha, and put in one, we got the announcement yesterday that North to Shore is happening starting that North to Shore is happening starting June 10th, that week, and the weekend before, I think, is still open. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to hold Asbury Fest that weekend. I think maybe, um, I mean, at least if it rains, it's not gonna be so cold, and the days are light longer. But, I just want to thank you guys all and the police, fire, EMT, and especially my DPW guys. Absolutely magnificent. That's all I have. Thanks.
Okay, uh, thank you.
Every weekend, Sylvia, rain every weekend. It's unbearable.
But, uh, even the community event, my partner's breaking through, and we had Sylvia Wolf walk past, at least we got that in, probably for you.
And Sylvia, can you let the businesses know, we met with the Army Corps of Engineers and Congressman Pallone's office, and this coming Tuesday at our Westlake Commission meeting, the Army Corps of Engineers will be here in city council chambers to talk about some of the flooding issues and what they might be able to do to help us moving forward. So, if any businesses who are impacted would like to attend, here Tuesday night at 7 o'clock.
Okay, thanks so much.
One second before you go ahead, I just want to, it's not, it's bad news. Uh, you know, with this storm, we kept records of everything, just, we were hoping for FEMA reimbursement. We found out today, there's gonna be no FEMA reimbursement, because to get FEMA reimbursement, you need at least $25 million throughout the state to get it to the federal level. The state, I think Monmouth County was the only county that put in any things whatsoever, and I think they put in, the numbers could be wrong, because I just got them late this afternoon. The county put in a total of $6 million, the city was over $3 million of that six, where, again, Julianne did a great job, OEM Director Guyperson did a great job. During the storm itself, police fire, DPW did a good job. Uh, that was the worst rain I've seen since 2005. Uh, and people say, Lake Avenue, I said, well, why do you think they call it Lake Avenue? But, and I worked with DPW for 31 years, and we would, many times, we would lose Lake Avenue all the way up to Emery Street. This is only the second time in my life, and I've been around Asbury a long time, that I see, saw it go all the way to Bond Street. Now, I can't get past Bond Street because you got a sharp incline going from Bond to Main. If I ever went to Main Street, like, you know, we, we would never recover. So, again, Eileen is the chairperson of this ad hoc committee. Uh, Pallone is chief of staffer there. Uh, they, they were in touch with us during the storm, like, what's going on, what's happening, what can we do? We need federal help. Uh, so we're looking at it, but unfortunately, like, the Army Corps of Engineers said, well, this study's gonna take two years. So, again, like, you know, as much as like, your guys are 10 years, we're being told the Army Corps of Engineers, two years to even do a study. So, it's not great news, but again, I gotta give our staff credit that we did apply for the money. And, but we're not gonna get it, but, but we'll keep on applying. So, thank you. Your turn.
Elizabeth Tenerowitz, also in the Steinbeck Building. So, I think we can all agree that what Sacman is doing is both unconscionable and unreasonable. So, my question to you is, do we have any recourse as far as asking for, what is their pricing model? I know it's something that I have asked in the past, and they have not given it to me. They're not making repairs, as we've talked about, is it by square footage? It seems to us that it's just arbitrary. Can we, at minimum, understand what the increases are for, what we can expect moving forward?
So, most real estate operators work off a principle of profit that is based on what's known as the net capital rate of return. And what that is, is a rate of return, expresses a percentage that is above and beyond all net operating expenses and taxes. Um, multifamily operators, over the last several years, have experienced a great deal of stress in their own operations because it never factored in a pandemic, or government prescribed, you know, lockdown on forgiveness of rent or suspension of having to pay rent, and that they couldn't affect people who, well, clearly weren't working. You know, if the money's not coming in, they, government said, well, you can't throw them out on the street. Nonetheless, they're still looking to get the net rate of return that they had gotten before. A lot of this happened, and there's just a supposition on my own experience, I've worked in commercial real estate for a number of years as a consultant, and I can tell you that sometimes when you see these drastic paces and increase, it's sometime to make the property look more attractive for sale. I don't know that for sure, that's only speculation on my part. As to your question as to whether you're entitled to that information, it is considered proprietary business trade information. Uh, they're not obligated or required to disclose it to you. Uh, they do provide information to the tax assessor, so that he uses different methodologies for determining the value of the property. One of those are income-based. I am unsure as to whether that information would be available, because again, uh, under most Oprah requests, we're restricted from sharing our proprietary business and trade information. Did I answer your question? Okay.
Hi, also a member of the cohort here from the Steinbeck Building. So, question about your name?
Just give us your name, please.
Josephine. So, question about parking.
Last name.
Scatino.
Thank you.
Parking. So, Sacman has a private lot that we are entitled to a spot in, to pay for, at whatever amount he wants to charge. So, we can't get a parking permit from the city, that's $90 a year, or whatever it may be, because of the zone we're in, and because the owner of our building allows us to pay him for a spot in a lot that he can provide two blocks from our building. Also, I can't get a permit in the Bangs apartment, uh, lot for $75, which is half the price, because I'm told, again, there's some ordinance or law within the city that if Sacman has a parking lot, that he can offer to you for whatever cost he wishes to charge, that we can't get any other parking in town. Is that correct? Or is it?
Sort of correct, isn't it?
I mean, I don't know about everybody else that lives here. We can't get a permit that's $90 a year, we can't sit park, pay $75 for the Bangs, they have lots, we have to pay whatever Sacman wants to charge.
That's what I talked about the other day.
Right.
Yeah. If, if they have a, a parking space, the ordinance prevents, unless they have two cars and making a apply for the apartment.
Right, but, but they, I think what she's saying is they don't, she doesn't have a parking space unless she pays for it.
Well, I'm not familiar with that redevelopment agreement, that's probably what the redevelopment.
No, I mean, we don't have, I don't have the ordinance in front. Can we, can we get you that answer? Can we get you that answer tomorrow?
I'm sorry? Yeah, so, so the parking ordinance, you know, as the city starts to develop, there's probably some, some language that can be modified. Um, I don't know when the parking ordinance went into place, how long it's been here, but now that there's a lot more development in the city and parking is at a premium, obviously, that's why developers that have access to these lots are charging these, these rates. And I think that's something that the city council will look into, and I'll have my staff pull some information out as well.
Yeah, because I was told, because I live in a Sacman property, I cannot get a spot in the Bangs parking garage that's half the price.
Yeah.
Or a parking permit that's $90 a year.
And I'm not sure where, and I'll have to talk to my planner, because I'm not familiar with this specifically, but if part of a, a developer's agreement requires them to have parking, then there, I would assume there would be some limit as to what, like, we have to, so let's say you move into a new building, you have to park in your space. If they're gonna charge you $100 a month to park there, then you're not parking in that space. We'd have to look at that. I think that's one of the challenges of our existing ordinance that we have to look at.
So, who do we contact for feedback or a resolution?
So, if you want to just give your information to our clerk, I'll have my, my planner, Michelle Alonso, reach out to you.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Because that's another thing that, and actually doubled without any.
Keep James Banado, the loop too.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, you know what, I'll just give you my card, and I'll distribute it to my staff, it'll be easier.
Thank you.
Sure.
I have a white robe in case anything happens.
Just remind me what you spoke about, because I have a lot of.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Justin Freed. I've lived in town for about seven years. Um, I, much of what I'm going to say might eventually be, um, subject to an official complaint before the rent control board, uh, but I did want to paint a picture for how the rent control ordinance is, is managed by Mr., is it Goodman?
That's correct.
By your office. So, my landlord is a property management company, and they tried to increase my rent by over 3.5% late last year. Um, and they didn't follow many of the, the stipulations in, in the ordinance. And, uh, I brought that to the attention to, of, of Mr. Goodman and his office, and they, besides not being helpful, in the course of my doing that, they ended up carbon copying the landlord, um, on communication, which I thought should have been private between just the two of us. And I asked him not to do that, and even after asking not to do that, you, you did it again. Um, and the landlord is a property management company, so certainly they should be privy to the rules in Asbury. And even after attempting to illegally raise the rent, um, they, they did so again within the confines of the ordinance, but the ordinance also has a clause in it that says that you can only attempt to do, to make any type of, um, increase, uh, once a year, to prevent people from fishing, to attempt to circumvent the ordinance. So, at this stage, I, I guess, I, my question is, are you allowed to, after you, is, is a landlord allowed to attempt to raise the rent illegally and then immediately raise it within the 3.5% amount?
The ordinance states that they are allowed to raise the rent once every 12 months with sufficient notice as specified in the lease, and can be no more than 3.5% in that 12-month period.
But, isn't there also a portion of the ordinance that says that they may only request or raise the rent that amount?
I'm, I'm unsure what you're saying. Forgive me.
In other words, once they make a request that's over the amount, that they can block themselves from making any other type of rental re, increase request for a calendar year. Otherwise, you're incentivizing landlords to take advantage of tenants who don't know about the ordinance.
Understood. So, Mr. Freed, it, you know, stating honestly, there was a difference between, you know, your version of the, uh, what happened, as well as the property manager, and as well as my staff and I. Uh, nonetheless, uh, I think you're referring to the fact that when the rent was registered in the prior year, it had one amount, and, um, they were basing the increase on the following year based on that amount.
That, that's also not a fair characterization at all. That's not.
No, no, I'm, I'm not, just.
Time's up, Rob, we can talk offline.
Uh, let me just quickly answer. So, when we discovered that, you know, that it was based on that amount, and we also pointed out to the property manager that, that what they had filed in the original year was an error, uh, they readjusted it and corrected it and applied to what should have been under the ordinance, a 3.5% increase.
That's a very strange accident for them to have made, don't you think?
Yeah, I.
Do you have any personal view or business relationship with that management company?
Absolutely none, sir.
Okay.
Okay, I wouldn't, yeah.
Fred, Fred, can you please, thank you.
Well, at this point, I think the speaker's time is up, and, you know, Mr. Goodman is graciously answering questions, but he's not, you know.
Thank you for your time, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think he's provided as much information as he can right now.
Hi, uh, my name is Josh, I'll leave my last name off the record. Uh, I just want to go on the record and just, uh, previous speaker just voiced my concern about parking. I'm a resident of, uh, 313 Bond Street, another Sacman property. I've been here for 10 years. I lived in the Steinbeck Building for about five and a half, and moved to the new property. Uh, my issue is, again, with parking. Um, Sacman, uh, it's a two-level parking lot we have in that building, uh, lower level, which is entered, you can enter it from Bond, and the upper level, you can enter it from Bangs Avenue. If you park on Bond Street, it's $150 a month, and if you want to park on the, you know, premium side, which is Bangs, which isn't a one-way, it's $175 a month. Um, my wife and I, we have two vehicles, and so we pay $150 a month, and then I pay for street parking. Uh, but again, every year, uh, Sacman keeps raising it. Uh, the Steinbeck, uh, tenants, they have a parking lot, which isn't covered, you have to shovel out, and again, it's $150. And I remember when I moved here early on, uh, it was $75. It's still expensive, but you know, reasonable. Went up to 150, and now I'm hearing from, uh, new tenants that Sacman is gonna raise it much more. It's gonna go to 200 plus, because again, there's a parking issue. Uh, so I just want to go on record and just file a complaint that it's, we're not New York City. You know, if, if I wanted to live in Hoboken, go into the city, yeah, makes sense. But, it just, it just, it, it hurts that you have to pay on top of the, you know, the, the rent that's being exponentially raised, I have to pay $200 plus. Uh, if I have two vehicles, I have to pay $300 on top of my rent just to, just park here. Um, and then that doesn't include, uh, like, friends, family. I want people to visit this town. So, I just want to go on record and just file, like, my, just my displeasure with Sacman just being to raise parking for no reason. Um, I'm sure a bunch of Sacman residents, all of us are just upset about it. Um, and then the new building that's, that's going up, I know friends in 550 Cookman, their parking space is getting, uh, removed, I believe that's on Summerfield, from the new, uh, project, they're gonna, they have to park in, uh, the new Lake Ave, and that's over $200. So, I just want to go on record and just, let, let's try and figure something out, because I've gone to the, uh, Parking Authority, and they have, 30 seconds.
No, finish, finish.
Um, I've, I've gone to Parking, uh, gone to the Parking Authority and raised my concern. So, we have two vehicles, and I'm also a state government worker, and I have a state vehicle, and I don't know where to park that thing. You know, unfortunately, I, I don't pay for that vehicle, my name's not on it, and they've requested me to, um, I need a certified letter signed by Sacman, certified letter signed from the state of New Jersey. I mean, it's, I have to jump through hoops in order to get a letter so I could pay you guys $90 to park in the street, or $75 to park in the street. So, I just want to voice my displeasure about that. Thanks.
Yeah, let me just say, I could be completely wrong with what I'm saying, but the way I understand the ordinance is you're right, if you have two cars, you got to park one at the site, but you can get a parking permit for the second car. No?
Let's.
Okay, okay.
Correct.
Why don't we just ask?
So, that's, that's correct. So, yeah.
Right, right, so you can get a.
And I can call the most parks, uh, if I can get a permit from the town department, correct.
Right, okay. And then, just out of curiosity, and maybe it's a long shot, you know, the state has put the building on Madison and Bangs, and, uh, it's empty 90% of the time. The state garage is owned by the state, and they have so many extra spots in there. If you're driving a state vehicle, can you put it in?
That's patrolled by, uh, the Parking Authority of Asbury Park.
Right, but, but you.
I'm a state worker.
But you're a state worker, and the parking garage is owned by the state, so you might be, want to reach out to them and see if you could park there.
100%, but it's also, but it's enforced by the Parking Authority of Asbury Park.
But, but if the state, this, if the state, the state says, and I'm just making up numbers, the state says, John, we have 450 spots. 250 of them are dedicated to the state, and 200 of them you can rent. So, there's, I'm making these numbers up, I'm, we're fairly close. So, there's 250 state parking spots in there the city cannot touch, the parking regulation cannot give you a ticket or anything. I'm just suggesting, maybe you reach out to the state.
Okay. No, I, well, again, I don't want to overreach and step on your toes there. But, the issue is, my main concern is just being a resident, having to, my main concern is just Sacman Carter and his, his team just charging whatever you want for a parking.
I, I think we all got that.
And I think it's a little mistake.
Yeah, I totally, and we, we agree with you. And I, thank you.
Move to close?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public participation portion is now closed.
Okay, so, quick question before we go on with the agenda, I just got to ask it because I'm curious. So, people with mold call the count, people with code enforcement call Mr. Goodman.
Correct.
Everybody got that?
But, Robert works closely with the Health Department, so if you can certainly call Robert, he can make the claim to the Health Department.
If there's problems in any one of Mr. Sacman's or any one of Mr. Moore's buildings, or any one of Ms. Quinn's buildings, dealing with.
If all of my I-owned buildings.
Dealing with code, Mr. Goodman and Code Enforcement. Mold, and stuff like that, Health Department, you do not get a response from the Health Department. Don't wait a month, let the city manager know, let me know, we'll reach out to the Health Department, because they're not doing this for free. We're paying the city, they're paying the county a good buck to be our Health Department. So, if they're not following through, uh, let us know. Don't wait two weeks for a council meeting, we can't take it more, we shut it. Yeah, we shut the public portion.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just provide a little clarification to some of what was shared this evening. They do usually end up contacting both. Mold is a result of condensation. Condensation usually results in water damage, which the code enforcement does respond to. We've been, actually been working with Ms. Hunt to inspect her property and, uh, you know, assess that damage and ask Sacman to make those repairs. But, uh, we, every communication that if there is a mold problem, you know, we, we are in dialogue with Monmouth County Health, and they're aware of the issue, uh, specifically in Ms. Hunt's building.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Robert.
Thank you, Robert.
And I assume it goes without saying, Jill, everybody's emailing Sacman, right? They're not, you're not just.
Talking to them, emailing them.
Okay, yeah, just making sure.
The fact that people are worried to even give their last name, which I did loudly and proudly, and like.
Yeah, but you shouldn't be the only one emailing, it, it's numbers that, that are gonna count.
Just because I'm letting my voice be heard, which is my right.
Please exit quietly, the meeting is still in session, excuse me. Can you please take your conversations outside? I'm sorry, the meeting is still in session. Everyone, can you please take your outside conversations outside? The meeting is still in session. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll reach out to them tomorrow.
Robert.
Thompson.
Good job, Robert.
Yeah, thank you.
We're now on to the minutes. We have the executive meeting. We have the executive meeting minutes and special meeting minutes of September 25th, the executive meeting and regular meeting minutes of September 27, and the executive meeting minutes and special meeting minutes of October 5th. Do I have a motion?
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're now on to consent agenda resolutions. All matters listed on the consent agenda are presented collectively to the city council and will be considered for approval with one vote. These matters are considered to be routine in nature, and there will be no individual discussion of these items. If discussion is desired by one or more council members as to any particular item, then said item should be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. On consent agenda tonight, we have resolutions 2023-461 through 2023-463, however, 2023-462 has been removed from tonight's agenda. Do I have a motion for consent?
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're now on to individual resolutions. I have resolution 2023-464, resolution approving payment of bills.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
No.
Resolution 2023-465, resolution authorizing the extension for solid waste collection services through December 31st, 2024.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-466, resolution authorizing payment to fulfill food bank for the purchase of foods for the city's emergency food assistance program through community development block grant, CDBGCV CARES Act funds.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-467, resolution awarding a contract to Millennium Communications Group for camera enclosure replacements needed at Convention Hall.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-468, resolution authorizing a professional services contract to Key Tech Associates for testing and inspections of the new fire department headquarters.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
No.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
No.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-469, resolution authorizing a professional services contract to T and M Associates for professional engineering services with the Asbury Avenue bikeway improvements.
Move it.
May I have a second?
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-470, resolution approving change order number one for Kennedy Park improvements project.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
What number am I on?
We're on resolution 2023-470, resolution approving change order number one for Kennedy Park improvements. Deputy Mayor Quinn.
For $0. Yes, 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 yes.
Thank you. Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-471, resolution approving change order number one for fire department headquarters.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
No.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
No.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-472, resolution approving change order number seven for Memorial Drive improvement projects.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-473, resolution approving change order number eight for Bond Street improvements project.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-474, resolution authorizing an accelerated electronic tax sale administered by RealAuction.com LLC.
Move it.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
No.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-475, resolution authorizing the disposition of surplus property.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-476, resolution authorizing the utilization of project labor, oh, I'm sorry, resolution 2023-476 has been removed from tonight's agenda. We're now on to resolution 2023-477.
Has it been removed or tabled?
I have removed.
Would it be? You can table it if you take a vote, it's up to council how you want it.